Mayor Lawson.
Here.
Councilmembers Abbott.
Here.
Vanderwell.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Bybee.
Here.
Rodriguez. City Attorney Duncan.
Here.
City Manager Loughlin.
Here.
We have a quorum. Thank you.
Okay, and our invocation will be given by Dr. Bradley Corbin of the Bahai Faith. Good morning. The Bahai Faith recognizes the United States having a very special spiritual destiny for itself and the world. In our sacred writings, I have a special prayer for America. I'd like to read. Oh thou kind Lord, this gathering is turning to thee. These hearts are radiant with thy love. These minds and spirits are exhilarated by the message of thy glad tidings. Oh God, let this American democracy become glorious in spiritual degrees, even as it aspired to material degrees, and render this just government victorious. Confirm this revered nation to appraise the standard of the oneness of humanity, to proclamate the most great peace, to become thereby the most glorious and praiseworthy among all the nations of the world. Oh God, this American nation is worthy of thy favors and is deserving of thy mercy. Make it precious and near to thee. For thy bounty, Ambestall. Thank you. City Attorney Duncan, will you lead us in the pledge?
Yes. Let's allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, let's move on to public comment. And we'll start with Larry Batten. All right, stand right here. You can have a seat right there and speak into that microphone where the green light is on. All right. Thank you, sir.
Sorry, I'm not really good at speaking in public. I live in an area where there is constant homeless people going on D O T properties, parking on D Street all the time with their RVs, and nothing is being done about it. The fact is, I go on the river and there are no camping signs. It is the same thing. There are, there are people who are living on the streets camping on the, along the river and on park facilities all the time. I go to grocery stores and I see panhandling in front of grocery stores. And there is a law that says they're not allowed to panhandle no more. And I was wondering, why isn't anything being done about these individuals?
Is that your comment?
Yeah, because it's, because the RV thing is like, people are, by where I live, there is, there's like four people there now. And when I call police and try to report it, they tell me to go online and file a report and sometimes those reports don't take no more than two or three weeks, sometimes longer. And why isn't anything being done about RVs and mobile homes parking in neighborhoods where they're not wanted?
This is public comments, not public discourse.
Yeah, and basically, I just was wondering, what can I do to friggin' stop, put a stop to it? Because nothing is being done.
Our police chief is standing at the back of the room. You can have a conversation with him.
All right. When? Right now?
Right there now.
I was wondering, why isn't anything being done about it?
You need to have your conversation outside.
Okay. Right now?
Like?
Yeah.
You're not, you still have 56 seconds to speak.
I'm good. I just wanted to get it off my chest because I just want something done about these homeless people.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Mm-hmm.
Allison Johnson.
Hello, I'm Alicia Johnson. I'm actually with the Reno Sparks Chamber of Commerce for their leadership class. We get to speak at a city council meeting, so this is me just coming in and saying hello and saying thank you for letting us be a part of this. It's been really fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. All right, Hunter Rand.
Turn off all this time. Hello, Hunter Rand. I live in Ward Two, addressing items 9.4 and 9.5. I'm in favor of 9.4. I think it's a really creative solution to bringing funding to the parks. 9.5, horrible contract. I've worked for college sports teams. I've worked for professional sports teams. I've worked in the MLB. I've worked for IMG Learfield that does the same thing as Sportsbins. And now I work for a company that's on the other side of it that buys things. This contract is just awful. I mean, it talks about, the jurisdiction is any court in Nevada, which tells me that if they have a problem with the city of Sparks, they're going to go to a justice in Perump that's going to be a little more favorable. I've seen contracts for a lot less that are a little more serious. And this contract, I wouldn't describe it as predatory, but just not, it's lacking substance. It's lacking a lot of the contingencies when, when you deal with this kind of contract. And I would hope that maybe before the contract is signed, seek some assistance from the state of Nevada. There's plenty of ENSHI employees that work with IMG Learfield and deal with contracts like this all the time that could prevent heartache and strange constitutional cases about, you know, freedom of speech. Can a white supremacist company, and they do exist, but a white supremacist themed company essentially, if they got together a couple million dollars, Sparks Marina presented by this white supremacist company, right? And there's a provision in the contract for it, but man, is it lacking. It's like one sentence where the city is delegating that responsibility to the company. And I have lots of questions. Is the city even allowed to do that? Who knows? But there's some employees at ENSHI that do know because these contracts are not new. This is, for this type of agreement, this is probably the shortest contract I've ever seen. The version I have is 17 pages. That's what was attached to this, the meeting agenda. I can tell you, just to hire me to do photography, my contract is currently 36 pages with all the fine print. So I'm very surprised to see a contract that has a potential value of millions of dollars in revenue is this short and lacking substance. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, I don't have any other public comments, speaking cards. Does anyone in the public wishing to speak at this time? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the dais and move on to the approval of the agenda. Mr. Anderson.
Yes, I move to approve the agenda submitted with item 10.1 being heard before item 9.7.
Ms. Vanderwell.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Mr. Rodriguez.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Minutes, looking for an approval of the minutes, additions, subtractions. Ms. Vanderwell.
I move to approve the minutes as a Sparks City Council meeting for the Sparks City Council meeting for May 12, 2024.
Ms. Bybee.
Did you say 24, 25?
It was a good year.
Back to the past. I will second that motion.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Mr. Rodriguez.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. All right, announcements, presentations, recognition items, and items of special interest. And Dr. Chad Kingsley, you're up with the Northern Nevada Public Health Mosquito Abatement. Thank you for coming by.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Chad Kingsley, Northern Nevada Public Health District Health Officer for the record. I just came here to give a brief presentation on mosquito abatement for this year through both Nevada, Northern Nevada Public Health and the District Board of Health. So, mosquito abatement for 2025, so we are suspending a large area treatment for this season, and that is the flying of the helicopter. We will continue surveillance and hand drone treatments. So we do operate, own and operate a drone. It has smaller, limited capacity, but it helps us reach those areas that we can't reach through blowers or just distributing manually through, through, throwing where we can, as far as we can reach it. This was one of the largest expenditures for Northern Nevada Public Health. That doesn't impact staffing. So looking at our fiscal, fiscal year 25 budget, the helicopter contract was 46,000 and the chemicals were 235. Because it crosses fiscal years, it's closer to, but we already spent 19,000 on the previous year. We just don't encumber, we don't encumber funds. So it's just a little bit less, but, so looking at that, then looking over the last five years, another thing that drove this decision is that when we're looking at the last five years, so our budget has remained the same, but our primary products, the larvicides, for that large area application have increased from 12.5 to 17, to 17% since 2021, as well as helicopter costs has increased year by year about 20%. So even if we were to maintain this course in about two years, we have to do four flights. We can't do three. We can't do two. It's not optimal. So it's four flights that we do a year and that helps control the, a larger population of mosquitoes. But even then, fiscally, we wouldn't be able to get to it. So looking at this, it was just, we can suspend this, but then also work with our community to be able to provide those services. Then as a data decision, looking past over the last five years, we've had one local case of West Nile virus, and that was in 2023. We've had 10 cases of Dengue malaria, 10 cases of Dengue fever and two of malaria, but those were imported. So those individuals got those diseases outside of our community and came back, and then were diagnosed here. And also the mosquito that carries Dengue malaria does not exist here. So there are different species of mosquitoes. And so it's the gipti, and that is, while we suppose it could be here, we haven't identified it here in our community. So looking at the, really a data decision, one case over the last five years is very minimal compared to other non-mandated services. So the service is non-mandated, non-regulated. It's just a service that we provide to our community, have historically provided. So what will remain, so surveillance will continue. Surveillance is where we go out and we set up traps and they have little carbon dioxide and little fans in them, do 24-hour, we bring that back, we weigh it. And a certain percentage, we look under a microscope and identify the species of that. And then we send it to the laboratory and they do any testing for any communicable or vector borne diseases. We will do specific and targeted treatment, so that will continue. So when we've identified that there are larger numbers, we will go out with a drone or we'll go out with our staff to see what we can, what we can treat at that time. Any complaints and requests for service are available and our staff can respond. We both have staff and we will have two additional interns to help us during this, during the season. And then any vector, vector borne issues still, will still be investigated and addressed. So when we're looking at this, this is a previous year, and this is, as this year goes on, right now it's blank, but as we start going on, you'll start seeing again where we're reporting at, where we're seeing larger populations of mosquitoes and what's being, what's being reported. So, but on average, the vector program averages about 150 to 230 mosquito pools submitted testing each month. That we, our staff goes out, places it and goes back and collects it. And then we submit to the lab. And then small bodies of water, we, we, when, when they're out there, they will take and dip into the water and if they see larvicide, then they see the mosquito larvae, also identify them there, so. So for you, if you have individuals who are calling for your constituents, we would ask you to please refer them to 311. You are more than welcome to us to forward them to me or to staff, and we, see, we address them. But when they call 311, that allows us to collect their address, their contact information, if they're getting bit, like during what time. A lot of our mosquitoes here are ankle biters and wrist biters, and they only usually do it at dusk and dawn. But, so looking at that, when staff does, is able to respond, they may call in and obtain additional information, see what resources are available, education to assist, as well as treatment if we're able to at that time. So as part of this too, for community outreach, so media and community outreach, we have, are working with our media partners to plan and prepare for this. So our community members are aware. We're continuing social media outreach and then also partnering here with our jurisdictional partners. Overall, how to prevent mosquito bites, so eliminate standing water in your properties. Any type of standing water that's there, even if sometimes even a small little can, that can be, they can, mosquitoes can breed in that small amount of water. Reduce lighting around the home during dawn and dusk. Yellow lighting tends to attract fewer insects. But again, it might be some H O A regulations, so check with those, and then consider outdoor repellent products. And personal protection, long sleeve, long pants, approved over the counter insect repellent. And identify if anyone does have flu-like symptoms during a non-flu system, please see your primary care physician just to say, I have been bitten a lot recently. I just want to be tested in case, anything like that. Then again, our team is, is always available to answer those, any questions, so. So I'm hearing any questions from you or any points that, overall in mosquito abatement that we can help with?
Question from the council, Ms. Bybee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So is the decision not to do the large scale strictly budgetary because the costs have gone up? Or because your funding, the funding that you had for that is not available, or both?
Both, overall. So when looking at it, so same as here, we're going through our, through our system and also looking what's mandated and what's essential. This is an essential one, so there's no ordinance, there's no statute that says that this is to be done. And so it's just something that we have responded to our community. And within our budget, we just do not have the budgetary means. And then also with the impacts, possibly with tariffs, but also with the uncertainty of our federal government, there's potentially up to $33 million being cut from public health this year that we're still waiting for that domino to fall. So this is us just taking the correct course to make sure that we can continue to deliver the mandated services that are required.
Okay, and I do appreciate the use of drones. Seems to really make sense. And then if people know they can reach out, and I think a really important, that education piece and the public awareness to remind all of us how, how we can help prevent because, and, and it's rationalized too by your numbers of West Nile only having one case, I get that. But I think having the help of the public and them understanding why the large scale is not happening, but that there's still mitigation and still things that everybody can do to address. Because if you ever know anybody who's gotten West Nile, and I have a family member who did, it's a big deal. So, okay, thank you. I appreciate it.
Hey, anyone else? Good? All right.
All right, thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Let's move on to 7.2. Proclamation for Brain Cancer Awareness Month. Do we have anyone here for this? There we go. Come on and sit down and.
Stevie, we'll read this and then we'll give you the mic. Perfect. Whereas brain cancer is a devastating disease that affects individuals of all ages, backgrounds, and walks of life. With approximately 700,000 Americans currently living with a primary brain tumor and nearly 90,000 more expected to be diagnosed in the coming year. Whereas brain tumors are the leading cause of cancer-related death among children and young adults under the age of 20. And among the most challenging forms of cancer to diagnose, treat, and survive due to their complexity and location. And whereas Brain Cancer Awareness Month is observed each May to bring heightened public attention to the need for more research, better treatments, and earlier detection, and ultimately a cure. And whereas advocacy group, healthcare professionals, caregivers, patients, and survivors work tirelessly, work tirelessly to educate the public, raise funds for research, and support those affected by brain cancer. And whereas the gray ribbon symbolizes strength, hope, and remembrance in the fight against brain cancer, and the message, Go Gray in May, reminds us to show our support for those battling this disease. Now therefore, on behalf of Ed Lawson, the mayor of the city of Sparks, Nevada, do hereby proclaim May 2025 as Brain Cancer Awareness Month.
Thank you.
Give us your name for the record.
My name is Stevie Arbro.
Do you have anything to add?
I do. Actually, I have a advocacy group, an organization to promote or bring awareness or attention to. Again, my name is Stevie Arbro, and I'm here today with my son to honor the memory of my late husband, his father, Adam Williams, who would have turned 37 just three days ago, actually. On May 24th. You can help me do this by recognizing Brain Cancer Awareness Month. I'm sorry. There are actually over 100 different types of brain tumors and different mutations among them create different subcategories of each. Each individual tumor responds differently to treatment, and for those that are malignant, doctors know that standard of care is not sufficient. Yet, standard of care for brain cancer has changed very little in the past 20 years, and brain cancer still kills more children and adults, actually, under 40 than any other type of cancer. That's why I'm so thankful that we found the Musella Foundation, which is an organization that I believe with all my heart helped to extend Adam's life as long as possible. It helped us to access the newest research, to find ways to help him at home, and to locate the best medical teams and treatments for him. Adam fought his battle for six years, and without the information we accessed through the Musella Foundation, chances are he probably would have left, lived less than two years post-diagnosis. I'm forever grateful for that extra time that we had with him. My hope is that by being here today and presenting you with this information, we can help start conversations surrounding brain cancer awareness, leading to much-needed support and funding for organizations that streamline innovative research and treatments like the Musella Foundation, so that someone else's loved one can live on in Adam's honor. Thank you.
Thank you. Question from the council.
Could you, could you spell the name of that foundation so that we could, can we get information online about the foundation?
Yes, so actually it's on virtualtrials.org. I don't know why it's different from the name of the foundation, but.
Virtual trial.
Virtualtrials.org.
Thank you.
Yes.
I'll just say, it's the last council meeting, I think you read it, Charlene for NF2. And so that's the little one right there. That's Adam and Stevie's son.
Yeah. Struck by lightning twice. Two totally different situations, both brain tumor related. Yeah. Yeah. So this is a big month for us. So thank you for your support. Thank you.
Okay. Take a photo with their councilman there. All right, let's move on to 7.3, DeAndrea HOA Firewise Community. Do we have someone here for that? Anyone? Come on down. We'll read the proclamation. We'll give you a few minutes to say something.
Whereas on October 23rd, 2020, the DeAndrea Homeowners Association became the first community in the city of Sparks, Nevada, to achieve the Firewise USA designation, demonstrating a strong commitment to wildfire safety and preparedness. And whereas the DeAndrea HOA continues to maintain the firewise status by fostering collaboration among residents and promoting ongoing education to reduce wildfire risk. And whereas in partnership with the city of Sparks Fire Department, the Nevada Division of Forestry, University of Nevada's Living with Fire Program, the DeAndrea HOA hosted the Community Wildfire Preparedness Event on Monday, May 12th, which I believe about 100 people showed up for, to help residents prepare for the upcoming wildfire season. And whereas this event reflects the proactive leadership of DeAndrea HOA in protecting lives, property, and natural resources through wildfire awareness and community resilience. Now therefore, Ed Lawson, mayor of the city of Sparks, do hereby recognize and commend the DeAndrea HOA for its continued leadership and dedication to maintaining a firewise community and encourage all residents to engage in wildfire preparedness efforts.
Give us your name.
My name is John Hasenau. I am co-leader of the DeAndrea Wildfire Preparedness Group. Jim Alsop is another member who is the other co-part. And we represent about a little over 2,000 homes that are part of a firewise chapter in community. And we are building that as much as we can. And we are also working with other firewise chapters within the Reno, Nevada area here, Northern Nevada, to go ahead and make people aware and to hopefully prevent and prepare for any wildfires that might occur. The 100 people that showed up, great response. We had good questions afterwards and a lot of work that Living with Fire has put into references and other things that people can reference quite readily and go ahead and see what they can do for their own homes. We need to build this. We're looking at grants to go ahead and work with a wider community area and to look at then working with the federal groups to help us in those grant preparations and getting the funding that we are going to need to go ahead and eliminate a lot of the cheat grass and other problems that we're seeing. So, I want to thank the Ed Lawson especially, but also the whole council for this recognition. It's been a long road and it's going to be a longer road yet. We've got a lot of work in front of us, so thank you very much for the recognition. We appreciate it. Proclamation.
Okay, go ahead, Paul.
John, I want to thank you for spearheading this on behalf of DeAndrea. Well done. And also I want to give a shout out to our fire department. We had several folks there at the meeting representing the city of Sparks and educating the homeowners, as well as our police department were, were there as well. So I wanted to say thanks for, for our staff that are helping to keep the community safe with you guys.
Thank you, Paul. It is a community event. It's not an individual by any means. Everyone participates, many agencies, as you mentioned. So, thank you.
Pass well worth taking on.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll get some pictures for the millions of viewers we have. All right. Move on to 7.4, Mental Health Month. Ms. Vanderwell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Whereas, mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being, and addressing the mental health needs in the city of Sparks for children, youth, adults, seniors, and families is fundamental to having a healthy community. And whereas, all people experience times of difficulty and stress in their lives. And with the prevalence of mental health conditions in our nation, it is important for all members of the community to know that specific tools exist which can be used to better handle challenges and protect one's health and well-being. And where, and whereas, prevention is an effective way to reduce the burden of mental health conditions. And with early and effective treatment, individuals with mental health conditions can recover and lead full, productive lives. And whereas, it is appropriate to recognize the importance of improving the mental health of all of our residents and the, and the city of Sparks is committed to raising awareness about mental illness, promoting effective community partnerships and collaborations to serve the mental health needs of our community, and increasing access to culturally and verbally appropriate mental health services. Now therefore, I, Ed Lawson, mayor of the city of Sparks, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2025 as Mental Health Awareness Month, and encourage all citizens, businesses, organizations, and agencies to work collaboratively to reduce the stigma of mental illness and to increase the mental health of our community.
Give us your name for the record.
My name is Nicole Shembry. I'm the executive director with the National Alliance on Mental Illness here in Northern Nevada that serves Washoe County. And what I have to say is really short and hopefully sweet, but the conversation about mental illness is being talked about, but it's not being talked about enough. And it might be because people don't want to say they have a mental illness. There's a huge stigma around that word. Maybe we talk about our mental health. And maybe that's more accessible for people, and that's fine. Here at NAMI, we really advocate for taking care of those in the community who are experiencing challenges and symptoms in their mental health or mental illness journey. And then loved ones who are caring for somebody, or who have cared for somebody, and that can be. And that can be even a school teacher or an acquaintance in the community that cares for you. That secondary trauma or even vicarious trauma is so prevalent here. And we're not talking about it enough. And that, you know what? And maybe that's okay, maybe we're not all going to be talking about it. But seeking out resources needs to be accessible. It needs to be so aware in every place here in the community so that people know that it is safe to talk about and reach out for resources, so that they know when they're in a workplace or a work environment, that their employment is safe or that there's resources for them there. What we can do is we can be that safe space for people so that they know that they can open up to us and we can find resources for them. We're not necessarily always here to solve the problem or to even call it a problem, but we can be the next source that sends them to where they need to go. Some people call us here at NAMI and we don't offer housing, but they're looking for housing and they need those basic survival needs for their own mental health so that they can survive. Though we don't offer housing, we're not the end of the rope for them. We don't just hang up the phone. We say, hold on a second, I hear you, let me find you something. And we give them a phone or a phone number to another place where they can go. So being a support doesn't mean that you always have the answers, but maybe you have the next step for them. And that's all I have for today. Thank you.
Ms. Vanderwell.
Yes, I want to in public thank NAMI because the tragedy that happened on Greenbree a little over a year ago, there was a family that was having issues with accessing mental health care due to language barriers and some ages. And NAMI stepped up and found the family some assistance. So I want to personally thank you for that. And I want to thank you for all that you do.
Yeah, it's an absolute pleasure. Thank you. We have something for everybody.
Just give it to our clerk for us, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much.
Anyone else? Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Mr. Manager, I'm going to have you take 7.5, 7.6, and 7.7. Okay, let's move on to 7.5. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There are seven vacancies on the Sparks Citizens Advisory Committee, each serving coterminus with the appointed elected official. Committee members must be Sparks residents. For the Sparks Civil Service Commission, there is one vacancy on the Sparks Civil Service Commission for a three-year term ending June 30th, 2028. Commissioners must be Sparks residents. Commissioners cannot be a city employee or related to one within the third degree of consanguinity, or a member of the city council, or appointed to another board or commission of the city. Applications will be accepted until 4:00 PM on May 30th, 2025. And lastly, for our Parks and Recreation Commission, there are two vacancies on the Sparks Parks and Recreation Commission, each for a three-year term ending June 30th, 2028. Commissioners must be resident, must be a resident of Sparks or have a valid Sparks business license. Applications will be accepted until 4:00 PM on Friday, May 30th, 2025. Persons interested in serving on any of these committees should complete a community service application online at the city's website, www.cityofsparks.us/getinvolved. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right, move on to consent items. I'm looking for a motion for consent items. Mr. Abbott?
I move to approve consent items 8.1 and 8.2 as submitted.
Mr. Anderson?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Mr. Rodriguez?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. General Business, 9.1, consideration, discussion, and possible approval are rejecting of an offer to settle pending litigation in the amount of $200,000 related to claims asserted by Kimberly Houston. Do we have a presentation on this or? Or just let's sit up there and look pretty.
There she is.
She was waiting in the wings.
Sorry about that.
One of our millions of viewers.
Yes, City Manager Luthon went way too quick for me during those announcements there. Good afternoon, Mayor Lawson, members of City Council, Mariah Northington, Senior Assistant City Attorney. I'm here today to present to you on item 9.1, which is the consideration, discussion, and possible approval or rejection of a settlement demand that we received on behalf of Kimberly Houston. The options before you today are to reject the settlement demand from Kimberly Houston, to accept the settlement demand, or to reject it and direct the city manager and city attorney's office to consider settlement options. If you have any questions, I'm here, otherwise I submit to you all.
Questions from the council? Okay, I'm looking for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, we will put up whichever motion the council would like once, whoever would like to make the motion lets us know.
Mr. Mayor, Mayor, I'll make a motion to reject the offered settlement.
Okay, give us just one moment.
Okay, I've got a motion from Mr. Anderson. Ms. Vanderwell?
Second.
Got a second from Ms. Vanderwell. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Mr. Rodriguez?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. All right, 9.2, consideration, discussion, and possible approval of a construction contract AC6115 with Sierra Nevada Construction, Inc. in the amount of $1,628,007 for the 2025 Drainage and Roadway Improvement Project M Street bid number 24/25-014-PWP-A-WA2025-217.
All right, well, good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and Eugene Direct Transportation Manager. I have here before you a construction contract for the 2025 Drainage and Roadway Improvement Project on M Street with Sierra Nevada Construction. A little background, this project is an ongoing yearly project where selected roads are completely rehabilitated to provide new roadway surfaces, sidewalk, urban gutter, and driveway transitions that improve safety and mobility for all road users. This project aims to rehabilitate a half-mile segment on M Street. And here is the scope of this project. You can see on M Street, it is between Pyramid Way and First Street. Funding for this project is accommodated in the fiscal year 2025 council-approved capital improvements program. Two bids was received on this project on April 24th, 2025, and staff recommends council approve this construction contract with Sierra Nevada Construction in the amount of $1,628,007. I'm happy to answer a few questions.
Questions from the council? Seeing none, I'm looking for a motion. Mr. Abbott?
Sir, I move to approve construction contract EC-6115 with Sierra Nevada Construction, Inc. in the amount of $1,628,007, no cents, for the 2025 Drainage and Roadway Improvement Project, M Street, bid number 24/25-014-PWP-WA-2025-217.
Ms. Vanderwell?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Mr. Rodriguez?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. 9.3, consideration, discussion, and possible approval of a construction contract AC6116 in the amount of $1,98,064 with Gerhart &amp; Berry Construction for the Sanitary Sewer Improvement Project on McCarran and Prater Way, bid number 24/25-012-PWP hashtag WA-2025-205. You have got a very loud shirt on there.
I was expecting, I was expecting.
I was starting to doze off until then. You're looking good.
So, good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. Rob Bedart, Utility Manager. As stated by the mayor on its long, long introduction, this is a sewer project to resolve the existing capacity condition within McCarran Boulevard and Prater Way intersection as detailed in our 2020 master. Construction is scheduled over six consecutive weekends excluding holidays. The weekend construction schedule will allow the intersection to be fully closed and reopen for Monday through Friday commuter traffic. This will reduce the impact on the traveling public, adjacent neighborhoods, and businesses during the normal business week. Extensive communication has already begun between N dot city staff, contractor, and our community communications outreach team on approval of the traffic control and additional notification and message board requirements. The contractor will notify residents within and businesses within a half-mile of the project prior to the start of construction. These notifications will clearly outline the construction schedule, operating hours, and the contractor and City of Sparks project manager contacts. The funding, should you, okay, should you choose to award this contract, staff will provide, will continue to provide information to the city communication team for additional information to the public in the coming days and throughout the project. The funding for this project was approved in FY23 CIP. We received two bids. Gerhart &amp; Berry Construction was the lowest bidder with $1,98,064. Staff recommends approval of this construction contract. The project is anticipated to start June 14th, pending N dot concurrence and the discussed outreach activities prior. With that, I'll open it up to any, any questions you might have.
Ms. Vanderwell?
Yes, the question is, is how is the contractor going to notify the neighbors?
In the contract, it says that we notify door hangers.
Perfect, thank you.
Mr. Abbott?
Yeah, that was actually my exact question. Can, just for follow-up, I guess where in that contract is I can see that myself? You know what, I, sorry.
It's in our traffic control section under the technical specifications.
Okay. Thank you, I think that's a great idea because that's some of the, if I may, Mayor, some of the feedback I get from some of our projects is a lack of communication, sometimes from residents and businesses, where they usually hear the news from me and they're not always, I don't have always the answers. So I love the door hangers because hopefully people, you know, I think all of us wear campaign hats, we, we do door hangers, they seem to work for all of us so far, so I think that's a great, a great use to, to get a message out there. So, thank you.
Just to add on to that, we, it's required seven days in advance to the prior start of construction.
Anyone else? Okay, I'm looking for a motion. Mr. Anderson?
I move to approve construction contract AC6116 in the amount of $1,98,064 to get part Berry Construction for the Sanitary Sewer Improvement Project McCarran Boulevard and Prater Way.
Mr. Abbott?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Mr. Rodriguez?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rob. 9.4, consideration, discussion, and possible approval of the City of Sparks Parks and Recreation Department Park Facility naming sponsorship policy and corresponding resolution number 3463.
All right. Good afternoon, I'm Emily Pate, Parks and Recreation Administrative Manager, here to present a park and facility naming sponsorship policy for your approval. The purpose of this policy is to establish a formal process for naming public parks and recreation facilities, and how we accept donations and facilitate sponsorships in the City of Sparks. The policy outlines the criteria for naming a park or facility. The park or facility may be named after historical or geographical features, may recognize historical event or individual, or may reference the housing subdivision that the parker joins. A parker facility may also be named after an individual when the following criteria have been met. A person, business, or organization has contributed significant amount of land or funding impact, or the person is deceased and being recognized for an extraordinary contribution. No current or active City of Sparks employee or family member is eligible to be nominated. The city will accept submissions at any time through the form referenced in the agenda packet and delivered to the Parks and Recreation Department. Submissions will be compiled and forwarded to the Parks and Recreation Commission for review and recommended to city council. The renaming of a parker facility is strongly discouraged in order to respect the historical tradition and community values of previous generations. However, any request for renaming will follow the process I just outlined. The sponsorship policy portion of the resolution establishes procedures that the city, that allow the city to seek and accept sponsors and donations that provide monetary or in-kind support for the city's programs or services. An agreement between the sponsor and city will outline the terms and requirements of the sponsorship. These terms will include the method and manner of the sponsorship, the sponsorship level, the value of associated sponsorship or in-kind gift, and benefits to be received by the sponsor. All sponsorship opportunities will be approved by the city manager upon recommendation from the Parks and Recreation Director. The recognition or acknowledgement of sponsors may take many forms and will be provided at a level that is commensurate with this contribution. Recognition may include a thank you letter, a press conference, groundbreaking, mayoral, or council acknowledgement at a civic function, or various signage opportunities. This policy incorporates many of the processes already taking place within our department and establishes a formal policy for everyone to follow. On the screen is staff's recommendation and I'm available for questions.
Questions from the council. Ms. Bobby?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Emily, thank you, I love this. I just, you know, for a number of reasons, excuse me, I think, you know, the opportunity to, for the revenue generation, the ability to recognize someone or in our community, historical or made huge contributions, it's kind of has that whole benefit as well as the financial benefit. And I, I'd like, it's a very detailed process that I, I appreciate and will be supporting. Thank you for your presentation.
Mr. Anderson?
Emily, I just want to say thank you for the presentation. I appreciate everything you and the Parks and Rec team have done to help think outside of the box through this financial situation we're in. Last thing we want to do is see our Parks Department go to, go to pieces. So something like this is, is a great idea. We really appreciate you bringing it to us.
Mr. Abbott?
Add on and say thank you for creating a formula, a more set system policy, I think, than what we had before, because obviously we renamed things throughout the city. Just one small shout out, I loved in your recognition of sponsors, and if you said it, I missed it, a thank you letter, which sounds super basic, but so many people don't do that, and I personally, that goes so far. So I am excited for the whole thing and excited to get some new names out there.
Me too.
Okay, anyone else? All right, with that, I am looking for a motion. Ms. Vanderwell?
I move to approve the City of Sparks Parks and Recreation Department Park Facility naming sponsorship policy and corresponding resolution number 3463.
Ms. Bobby?
I will second the motion.
Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Mr. Rodriguez?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. 9.5, consideration, discussion, and possible approval of an agreement AC6107 between Sportsman Solution and the City of Sparks.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, again Emily Pate, Parks and Recreation Administrative Manager. The City of Sparks Parks and Recreation Department seeks to enter into a 12-month professional professional service agreement with Sportsman Solutions. Sportsman Solutions will provide naming rights and sponsorship consulting and management for parks and recreation facilities. Sportsman Solutions will perform an assessment of the local market and review of the department's facilities to determine sponsorship value for each asset. Once a fair market value has been determined, Sportsman Solutions will market city parks and facilities assets with the goal of obtaining sponsorships. Should a sponsorship be obtained during the contract period, the city of Sparks will pay a 20% commission to Sportsman Solutions based on the contract value of the sponsorship. This proposed contract does not include a monthly retainer, which is often industry standard for this service. Staff recommends approval of this agreement and I'm available for questions.
Okay, questions from the council. Mr. Abbott.
I have a one that just popped in my head. For assets, I guess, what, what are some of the assets that we could be looking at? And I think of like fields and like all that, but like could.
Unity centers, parks.
Okay. How about small things, like could we do like a gazebo?
I think nothing is off the table.
Okay, got it, thank you.
You want to sponsor a gazebo?
I believe the fifth.
A little, a little one.
Ms. Vanderwell.
Thank you. I just have a question because we had someone speak on it. On the contract, was the contract reviewed through our legal?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Mr. Anderson.
Then I would go off of remember Vanderwell's question and just take it a little bit further and say, based on the review, our, our legal team feels that it's, it's a solid contract.
Yes, so Ms. Cobley was the one that looked at this contract and the, for example, I mean, the, I think there was an example that was brought up that, you know, the city is going to have that ability, that back and forth to talk about what type of sponsors there's going to be and those types of things. They enter into that contract period. There's at least looking at Exhibit A, that I was looking at through here. There is that back and forth that can happen with, with the city when they're entering those contract terms and everything. So if there's concerns with sort of messaging and those things, the city will be able to have a, have a say in those.
Thank you.
So this is, and this is probably to Wes also. It's a 12-month contract, but is there a 30-day cancellation period on either, for either party, or we're locked in for a year?
I'm looking back through it, there's, there are, you know, in terms of, there's breach, there's, there's different breach provisions in the contract. So either side breaches the, or excuse me, the contract. But yes, this is a, it is a 12-month contract. There's certain, paragraph five, it talks about if there is a breach, both sides have to give 30 days' notice and those, those type of things. Try to cure the breach if there is that. But the only way that the term wouldn't go forward would be if there was a breach by one of the parties.
Okay, and one quick follow up on the 20% commission. Say we only stayed in this contract for a year with this group. That 20% is, I, I guess every contract's going to be different on sponsorship. If people are going to pay a one-time fee, if they're going to pay a monthly or annual. But I guess if we were not with this organization, would we still be paying them years down? If they got the first, you know, the sponsorship that say was annual, would they always receive the 20%? Or only if they're still, and I guess that's a Wes question, if they're only still under contract with us?
Councilwoman Bobby, my understanding of the way the contract reads is say you have a three-year term with a sponsor and this organization is the one that secured the sponsorship. They would get 20% of the compensation for that, that period of, say the city in the fourth year either didn't have the service anymore or had somebody else that they were dealing with. When you enter into that first year of that other contract, you wouldn't still be paying this org. If that makes sense. So if it was a three-year term, they would get the 20% compensation for the three-year term. Once that, say we were not in a contract with them after, in the 13th month, we decided we don't want to do this service anymore. And then in the fourth year, and this is complicated hypothetical.
Lawyers, there.
Yeah, started off as a real easy conversation.
Yep, it did. Yeah, so, yeah, so if, if it's a three-year term, they get the compensation 20% for that three years. If we're not in a contractual relationship with them and say we entered a new contract with a sponsor that was terminated at the end of that three years, then we wouldn't have to continue to keep paying them. Only for the three-year contract.
Ms. Vanderwell.
Okay, now I want clarification, sorry. So the first year, let's say they secure, they secure a sponsorship. So they're paid that 20% that first year. Okay? And let's say that then we don't use them again. But then we continue to secure the same sponsorship year after year. We are not obligated to pay them, are we?
You are obligated for whatever the term was when, when they secured the.
The sponsorship?
Sponsorship.
Okay, so if the sponsorship is five years long, then first five years.
If you're doing year, year to year, and say you terminated the relationship with them after a year and you enter into a new contract and it's past the year, then, then you wouldn't get. It's however long you, so if there was a 20-year contract, right, they would receive compensation for this contract for that, for the 20-year.
Okay, and they're negotiating the contracts on the sponsorship or we are?
Question, I'd have to get back. But I believe that they're negotiating on our behalf with our final approval.
The way that Exhibit B of the contract reads and in their scope of services that they are trying to find sponsors or trying to find messaging. They have that interaction with us as the city in terms of, but they are the ones that are doing the contract negotiation because that's what you're, you all are hiring them for with the final. Emily's.
I'm sorry, I have another follow up. Are we able to amend this contract?
But I would say if we want to amend the contract, we would want to have some sort of direction, city manager's office, and what provisions specifically you would like to see us try to go back for.
Well, because what my, what my question is, is if any one of us brings a sponsor to the table, I don't want to have to pay someone if we've brought that person to the table. I guess that's where I'm coming from.
In this contract for the 12, that we have for 12 months, we would be paying him a commission for any sponsorship under, for a parker facility or asset that he's going to sell sponsorship.
I guess that's where I have some heartburn, is I think that all of us have people that we can reach out to, to bring them to something like this. But I don't want to have to pay, I don't want to have to pay a company 20% for however long that contract is when they weren't the one that secured it. So that's just where I'm coming from on that one. Okay, thank you.
So can I follow up on that? So, so Wes, what Councilwoman Vanderwell is saying, if one of us did bring a sponsorship, would we have to pay that commission? Or is it just what these, what this company secures? Or do they have rights on all sponsorship and naming rights for the time we're under contract with them?
So I think here's the thing of like trying to kind of give on the fly legal advice in a, in an open meeting. I, I think it depends, right? It would depend on the circumstances. And so I, I think if this, if the council wants our office to explore that in concert with the city manager's office, I would suggest doing a motion consistent with your comments about timing of sponsorships and who brings sponsorships to the city that we look into. I think we have enough information that we could reengage sportsmen's and, and talk to them about what that looks like and clarify that. Because I don't, the way that the current contract reads right now, I think they would likely have an argument that nope, anything you bring in is, is certainly, you know, subject to compensation. So happy to have our office and the city manager's office engage on that. That's the council's.
So Wes, what you're saying with the way the current, this current contract is, it gives them exclusive rights? Or any sponsorships you're naming?
I, I think, let's.
Or it's not clear.
I, yeah, I, I think if the direction is back to us that we, that we need to look at it and want to make some of the things clear that this council has shared with us, then we can go back and engage.
Thank you.
Rabbit.
Not to add, hopefully provide maybe some helpful information. Under the terms and professional fees, there's a lovely pink added text. And obviously I'm not the lawyer, not trying to play one. But it does mention this does not prevent the client during the term of this agreement from contracting directly with potential sponsors for activity guide activities and media opportunities that were not contacted by Sportsman. I'm not sure if that helps any, if that's. That's all I.
I think also the thing to keep in mind is we're not paying them a monthly fee either, so. That's a, that's a savings there too.
But I guess then what is?
But do you want to, what's the pleasure of the council? You want to send it back and have the city manager reevaluate it?
Before we, how about what I just read, what does that mean?
I don't want to give legal advice on the, on the dais. I think what we can do is, let's, let's, no problem. We'll, we'll send it back and we'll chat about it and then.
So can we get a motion up to Madam Clerk to do that? Refer it back to the city manager?
Mr. Mayor, we can, if you give us just a brief recess with the attorney to word that correctly.
Do you have anything to add, Mr. Rodriguez?
No, I, I don't, it's kind of digesting.
Thank you. Don't you feel lucky with this in here? Okay, we'll take five-minute recess. Don't run away. Back to order. The uh, city council meeting in nine point five. Do we have a motion now, Madam Clerk? There we go. Ms. Vanderwell?
I just have one clarifier here. When you guys go back, because I thought about it, I don't mind paying them the 20% for the first year referral. But if it is a longer contracts than that, and it was a referral from one of us, I don't want to pay them for the term of that contract. That was my reasoning in asking for this. Perfect. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay. Well, with that, then I'm looking for a motion. Ms. Vanderwell?
I move to direct the city manager's office and the city attorney's office to review and potentially revise the proposed agreement AC dash six one zero seven between Sportsman's Solutions and the City of Sparks to provide additional flexibility for city procured sponsorships.
Ms. Bybee?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Mr. Rodriguez? Go ahead. Don't you want to read it again, Don?
Yeah. I move to direct the city manager's office and the city attorney's office to review and potentially revise the proposed agreement AC dash six one zero seven between Sportsman's Solutions and the City of Sparks to provide additional flexibility for city procured sponsorships.
Okay, motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Nine point six, consideration, discussion, and possible approval of a resolution number three, four, six, two regarding the city policy related to special events. Parks and Rec's Day in City Sparks.
You don't come often, and when we do, you're more excited. Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. Again, Emily Pate, Parks and Recreation Administrative Manager, and Nancy O'Connor, Parks and Recreation Director. We're here to present for approval resolution three, four, six, two, which establishes policy for special events. Also with me here today is Raquel Montserrat, Special Event Supervisor. And we also have other team members available for questions, Jim Rundell, Chris Crawford, and Scott Means. Sparks Municipal Code, Chapter nine point three, four establishes legal standards for special events such as the regulation on the gathering of people at special events, requiring permits for special events, the regulation of alcoholic beverages at special events, and the ability to charge fees to recover city costs. It also defines certain rights and obligations to permit holders. Resolution three, four, six, two establishes operational policy for special events. The resolution classifies events into two tiers. It highlights that producers will receive online access to the city's special events manual, which provides specific information regarding producing events. This manual has areas that the permit holder must verify that they have read. Also highlighted is the eligibility for financial support to qualified events through Tormark funding. If the event meets specific criteria such as attendance estimates that we can verify through Placer, confirmation of advertising and marketing, and promotional efforts that specifically state the City of Sparks as well as the city logo, and the event is in good standing with the city. Tier one events are held on or near Victorian Avenue or other defined spaces and are of a certain size or duration, serve alcohol, or require city services such as police, fire, community services, or road closures. Tier two events are held elsewhere in the City of Sparks and require less services and typically don't need road closures or police services. First, we'll discuss tier one events. Special events, special event days for tier one events are capped at thirty eight event days per year. Tier one events will incur a capital replacement fee for ongoing maintenance and repair costs for in-ground barricades. Tier one special events may be eligible for Tormark funding if they meet the criteria. Event fees are based on the current fee policy and are subject to change. Event costs to the city will be a hundred percent fully recoverable from the event producer. The city may, at its discretion, close Victorian Avenue from Pyramid to East of Victorian Plaza from July third to the last Monday in October, or based on the number of or total event days associated with tier one events. We're building in flexibility to the schedule based on other promoter-producer events that are scheduled each year. During the closure, we propose the Summer in the City series. This map shows the proposed pilot program Summer, Summer in the City closures. This closure has been a collaboration between city departments and downtown businesses to allow for safe events as well as business continuation for downtown merchants. Special event staff contacted all affected downtown business owners and met with those that responded. These businesses are open to collaborate with the city on this program and willing to embrace a new opportunity to encourage more foot traffic to downtown Sparks. Concerns from business owners included the loss of loading zones for food delivery pickup, parking for food and beverage deliveries, and rideshare drop off. The team has worked to mitigate these concerns by identifying alternative locations for these services during the proposed closures. Excuse me. The primary goal of this program was to reduce the time and resources public works staff dedicated to special events. This pilot program saves an estimated fifty hours of staff time per event, allowing the public works team to focus on their core responsibilities while continuing to support community events in a more sustainable and effective way. Now I'm turning over the presentation to Raquel to fill you in on the exciting events we have planned for Summer in the City.
Good afternoon, Mayor Lawson and council members. I'm Raquel Montserrat, Special Event Supervisor in Parks and Recreation. Here to talk to you about the proposed Summer in the City program. During the closure period that Emily just laid out, and when other events are not scheduled, the city proposes to produce pop-up events each weekend on Victorian Avenue. Our goal for these pop-up events is to increase foot traffic to our downtown core. And during these events, we will not be bringing in any outside food or alcohol in order to encourage attendees to patronize the businesses downtown. Some examples of these pop-up events include a plant sale and swap, where we'll invite local nurseries and plant stores to set up vendor booths to sell their plants, as well as a swap tent where attendees can bring their own houseplants from home and trade with others, and a build your own bouquet station. Another proposed event is a Saturday brunch on Victorian Avenue, including live music in the Tony Armstrong Amphitheater, yard games, and brunch-style food and drinks. Another is a mini street art festival, where we'll invite local graffiti artists to live paint, a box truck in Victorian Square, while attendees enjoy food, drinks, and live music at Great Basin, and a sip and shop event hosted by Sierra Arts Foundation's Literary Group. Sierra Arts Foundation has a group of over two hundred northern Nevada authors who will invite to set up vendor booths and invite a local winery so attendees can sip wine while chatting about books with local authors and their friends. Thank you so much for your time.
All right. The resolution also defines tier two special events. Tier two special events are typically held at one of our larger parks with ample parking such as the Marina, Shadow Mountain, Golden Eagle, or Paola. Tier two events may be eligible for Tormark funding. Event producers may use third-party, city-approved vendors for security, trash pickup, fencing, or road closure needs. This use of vendors correlates to less demand on city services and staff. Example of tier two events include Kids Free Fishing Day, Adventure Day, and Awareness Walks. Our recommendation is on the screen and the team is available for question.
Questions from the council. Mr. Abbott?
I got one. With the rideshare drop off, where are we looking to do that with this for this year?
So we're kind of discussing two options, either using Victorian Plaza as a turnaround place for rideshare, or actually Scott Means has been working with Google and Apple to identify drop off locations on Avenue of the Oaks.
Thank you.
Mr. Anderson?
No questions. Great presentation. You know, you guys don't show up often, but when you do, you knock it out of the park. This is, this is awesome. I'm proud of you guys. Great job. And I'm, I'm looking forward to going down to those events, the pop-up events that you guys have. That's, it's, it's going to be exciting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Question on the pop-up events or other smaller events during the Summer in the City. Are there still slots open for groups or individuals that have an idea or wishing to and to book something there? Would they just contact you directly, Raquel, on other options to, to fill up that space? I love, I love the, I love the whole concept. I love us being able to really energize and activate downtown and get people coming down for more things, I think, is a really good thing for all of our businesses, but for, for our residents to just have a place to go with their families and to enjoy downtown and maybe more people come down there, spend time, spend money, and have, I love what's on your calendar, but how would they reach out? Or is, I guess, is it available for additional?
Yeah, absolutely. We're, we're encouraging people to put in special event applications for that period of time. So there's as much going on down there as possible while the closure's in place. And I've suggested to all of the businesses downtown also that they could put in those special event applications if they have some ideas themselves, and it seems like they, they do. And we'll waive those fees for, for this.
Okay. And are we maybe promoting that? I'm looking back at Julie on social media. How will people know? You know, so that we can make people aware of that, not only the events themselves, but people who might have other ideas or things they want to do? Can we promote that through social media? And however, however else you guys promote within Parks and Rec would be awesome.
All right, yeah, that sounds like a great idea.
Mr. Abbott, you got something else?
Um, well, so I know initially when, when you guys came to us, I was definitely not the most in favor of it at all, you know, downtown Sparks. You know, I like to say we're at a spot where we have an opportunity to do something different. We kind of had rebirth, you know, I think of like the phoenix, you know, of thank goodness it didn't burn. But you know, we're at a, at a spot where we can do something different. You know, there's a lot of businesses down there that, you know, the special events help them a lot. Having a road closed, you know, it's, it's a curve ball. It's something different. And I won't call out the person that said this, but I definitely get a little pushback. And she said, I'll read it. What we're doing right now isn't working. So let's try something else. And that one really, I don't think it hit me until later, till I looked back at it. You know, there's a lot of, a lot of businesses I represent, as well as a lot of residents down there that I represent as well, that we have an opportunity. Thanks to all of us for changing some dollars with Tormark. We have seven thousand dollars to really activate or reactivate this place. And I, I think it's, you know, what we've been doing, you know, the definition of insanity is continue to do what we're doing without changing it. And this is going to be a pilot program. We're looking as our, our residents are listening to our businesses, we're looking for one year, you know, let's try this for one year, let's see what we can do. And I think we're all open for feedback on how we can improve. And you know, this, this isn't just about closing a road down. It truly is something about, you know, opening up Victorian Square, getting people back down there, getting back to, I don't, I'm not saying we need the farmer's market again of Thursday, which that's great and healthy, but you know, that, getting those people down there all the time. So I'm excited for, for y'all to come up with this idea. And excited for it. And you know, we, we got to try something. We got to activate downtown Sparks again. We got to get people down there, you know, our, our slogan, it's happening here. Right now, you know, there's some spots that are empty. There's some spots we need some, we need some community leaders to come in and fill those spots. We need our community to fill all seven of those events, plus all the other ones every week, to really, you know, invest into those businesses. So I just can't say thank you and good job for all of you, especially for the outreach and all that. And I'm excited to, you know, try this pilot and see where it goes. So that's all I got.
That was a lot. The most I've heard you speak in a while.
I cut out the seventeen other pages.
All right, anyone else? If not, I'm looking for a motion. Mr. Abbott?
I move to approve resolution number three, four, six, two regarding city policy related to special events.
Ms. Vanderwell?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Mr. Rodriguez?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Okay. Thank you, guys. Now, you got some work to do. Okay, ten point one is a public hearing on the tentative budget for the City of Spark fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty-six required by NRS three, five, four dot five, nine, six. Mr. Cronk?
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. I am Jeff Cronk, your Chief Financial Officer for the record. This first item is just a public hearing that is required by Nevada law that we have to hold on the tentative budget, not the final budget, but the tentative budget, which was filed on, on April fifteenth in accordance with Nevada law. So we just have to open up a public hearing, invited the public comment, and there is no other action needed.
Okay. We'll open this up to public comment. Anyone in the public wishing to speak on this item? All right, we'll bring it back to the dais. And I am looking for, nothing?
No action required.
Not looking for anything. Okay. Looking to move on then to nine point seven. Consideration, discussion, and possible adoption of a, the final budget for the City of Spark for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six.
Good afternoon again, Jeff Cronk, your Chief Financial Officer for the record. This is, I don't have a presentation. This is everything that we discussed on April twelfth and presented there, where we got your direction to build the final budget. This is now the final budget being built in accordance with Nevada law and all their, all their documents and forms in compliance with taxation's requirements. So we basically put everything that you gave us direction on to file that fiscal twenty-six final budget on May twelfth, put it in paper form, and it's ready for your vote today, and signature should you approve it. With that, I could answer any questions.
Questions from the council? Okay, Mr. Abbott?
I don't have any questions, but you're not going to get away this easily without me reading a little bit.
Pardon me?
I'm going to read. I said, last thing you said, I didn't have enough words. So I consolidated the last one. Um, but yeah, I just wanted, I typed this all out, so I have all my numbers, so I don't mess this up. Just want to say, start by expressing my gratitude to all of our City of Sparks employees from Public Works, Police, Fire, TMAF, Parks and Rec, Finance, Customer Service, IT, Planning Code Enforcement, Engineering, and I probably forgot somebody, but, and more. Whether you work here now or in the past, thank you. I truly appreciate you. Representing Ward One means I speak for about twenty-two thousand residents, give or take, many living paycheck to paycheck. A lot of renters who don't qualify for utility assistance because their utilities are in their landlord's names. And that's not true for everyone, but it is true for some. I also represent about a third of the Sparks industrial businesses, and many small businesses owned by first-time entrepreneurs just trying to stay afloat. Today, we're voting on a budget that includes a proposal to raise the waste management franchise fees by ten percent, bringing it to a total of eighteen percent. This would reduce layoffs from thirteen, we were at our five percent fee, franchise fee, to eleven, and our frees, two, or my apologies, three police department positions. But even with the increase, layoffs can still happen, and that worries me. There, there's still going to be a dark cloud over, over us for a little bit. Ward One has the lowest median income in Sparks, at sixty-four thousand, four hundred ninety-six dollars, and the highest utility burden at six point one percent of income compared to four point nine percent in eight nine four three four, and four point three percent in eight and four three six. As I quote these numbers, I did get them off the Truckee Meadows tomorrow, which we did have a presentation, I think, earlier this year or later last year, they came down. So it's all available. Overcrowding is real. Nine point nine percent of housing units in eight nine four three one are overcrowded, over four times higher than eight nine four three four, and eight times higher than in eight nine four three six. Homeownership is only forty-two point six percent in eight nine four three one, compared to fifty-nine point two percent and seventy point five percent in eight nine four three six. The average household in eight nine four three run runs a one hundred and fifty dollar monthly deficit after covering rents or mortgage, utilities, internet, if they still have it, groceries, transportation, phone and health insurance, once again, if they have it. And those are just averages I ran. Obviously, every, every household is different. That compares to a ninety-three dollar surplus, you can call it a surplus, in eight nine four three four, and four hundred and thirty-three dollars in eight nine four three six. At our December Strategic Planning Workshop, we committed to prioritize employees in every decision, focus on what truly matters to the community, strike a balance between flexibility and long-term goals. I believe, obviously rejecting the ten percent proposal still supports our employees, because this isn't a long-term fix, and layoffs may still occur. We'd also be placing more burden on residents, which I'll definitely say Ward One residents will all be facing a burden. But there's no doubt with my numbers I mentioned earlier, they'll be facing a large burden. We're already stretched thin. Last meeting, we approved two employee contracts, which I support our employees. And I'm well aware that many are open in FY twenty-six with financial impacts we need to plan for. You know, mentioning last meeting, you know, we look into ten percent, that solved our deficit for FY twenty-six, but with those two employee contracts, that creates a deficit right there, and we have other ones that are open. I said I'm supporting our employees. I'm just looking out, looking out for, for the whole city and our, our health, financial health. I fully support investing in public safety. Ward One has the highest call volume in Sparks. I recognize that. But when you add in sewer rate increases, NV Energy hikes, TMAF increases, waste management's four percent that they have on CPI, and just to go back a little, the sewer, we're looking, we haven't voted on it, six percent for FY twenty-six, TMAF's four percent FY twenty-six, NV Energy went up by four percent, back notch over twenty-four. And now this proposed ten percent fee, in my opinion, is just too much for residents. We've already taken steps to strengthen our revenue. And we're also doing other ones, you know, obviously, you know, we're exploring Sportsman's Solutions. We're nearly done implementing credit card fee recovery, which that's amazing to staff. That's something that is awesome. We're staff, that's something that is awesome we're doing. You know, we're looking updating fire inspection fees, um, for the first time in over 20 years. We're making great steps, I recognize that. These help, but they won't close the structural gap. This is a hard vote, but I ran to serve for Ward 1, not just when it's popular, but when it's right. We already seen businesses close, a 10% fee might push more over the edge. I promise I'm almost done. I thank you guys. So I want to be clear, I won't support the 10% increase, but I am open to a 6% increase with that, without adding new positions. That helps protect jobs while minimizing harm to residents and businesses. I understand this leaves us with a 200,000 FY26 budget deficit, uh, that 6% is about $300,000. And if you look at the last employee contract, that actually takes down 200,000, so we're only chopping away at 100,000 there. But, uh, but I'm hoping the revenue strategy is already mentioned earlier, as well as the other ones that we've all chatted about, can help close that gap. Sparks has always found a way to balance the budget. For years, we've always found a way, but we are running out of tools. You know, we go, we go waste management, there's no cap. In five years, is it going to be 100%? Will that solve our, will that solve our budget woes? Probably, but it's a lot of money to pay for, for trash. Uh, we need legislative help now more than ever. Um, you know, I am not trying to beat a dead horse, but you know, resetting property tax on sale or something, a version of it, which we all know that's dead in the water, but we need help. If our legislators are watching this, we need help, we need assistance. We can't just continuing to increase our waste management franchise fee every year to fix our budget deficit. That, that, just, no. Uh, what matters to the people I represent is staying in their homes, feeding their families, and not being priced out of Sparks. Uh, that matters just as much as any line item in any of our spreadsheets. This isn't a vote against staff, it's a vote for sustainability, equity, and a future where Sparks, where everyone has a chance to stay and live here. That's all I got, thank you.
Mr. Anderson.
Holy cow, how do I follow that? So, uh, I, I appreciate, uh, member Abbott and his comments there in depth and, um, to the point. And pretty much what I'll say is, is the, the points that he made, although Ward 3 is different, um, to look at a 10% increase for homes or businesses when, as I said in our last meeting, one of the largest employers in Ward 3 has announced that they're closing down the facility. I'm talking to business owners and business managers in this area that are saying that these are uncertain times and they're not very confident about what the future holds. Is this the, the last straw? Is this just the little bit on top of TUMO, on top of sewer rates, on top of everything else that's increasing, that now we're just pushing people over the edge? And I, I disagree with the 10%. I don't feel it's the right amount. Likewise, um, staff's original recommendation is, is where I hold, um, because of the fact that, um, what, where this lands is you've got some departments that are taking on the burden of 20, 30, 40% reduction in staff and other departments only taking nine. And it was brought up about public safety and that that's, that's paramount. And I agree, I agree. Public safety has to be paramount to everything we do here as a city. But as I said in this last meeting, I argue that public safety plays into pretty much every single part of the, the job that we do as the City of Sparks. If we don't have city clerks and purchasing and human resources, if we don't have road maintenance and vehicle maintenance and sewer maintenance and all park maintenance, you know, the last thing we want is to, to hear about a kid getting hurt at a park because of unsafe equipment. So my argument is every, every department is critical to the public safety of our city. And I just don't believe that this proposal is the best option for the City of Sparks and, and the citizens. So I will not be voting in favor of it.
Anyone else? Ms. Bybee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate the comments from my colleagues here. It's tough times, the reality right now that all of us are facing, this decision that we've got to make, the economy, um, here in the City of Sparks, in the state of Nevada and nationwide. Um, and what's so frustrating, I think, as we have to make these really rough decisions is so much of it has been out of our control. We've been really, I've been here 10 and a half years and, and we're fiscal conservatives. We're really, Jeff, you do an amazing job of really making sure that we're mindful of those taxpayer dollars that we have. It's my number one priority is fiscal restraint and responsibility for every dollar because every one of our residents and businesses work too hard for the money that they earn. For me, not to be responsible with those dollars, but the position we're in, inflation, that comes, that comes from Washington DC. That comes from federal policy and debt that has decisions back there have driven our economy in the last couple of years, the inflation rate that a lot of people forget that it compounds. So a couple of years, two years ago when we were at over 9%, and now for only 2.3, which we are right now, and people are like, oh, phew, that's great. It's compounded. It went nine and six and five, all added up. And I think the weight of that, well, I don't think, I know the weight of that inflation, the cost for us to do business, for residents to buy groceries and gas and rent and businesses to operate are felt, um, across the board of what that cost is, the expenses compared to the income coming in, it's just not sustainable. So the inflation piece, I feel, really starts at the federal level, comes on down. The state, to your point, um, is, is not giving us any help. And we've got a bill that we were trying to get that reset, the property tax reset, AJR 1, that died last Friday. And I'd like to thank Assemblywoman Natha Anderson for pushing as hard as she could. But what's frustrating to me is that the legislature, and this is third time or fourth time, Mr. Mayor?
This is the second time it's gotten to.
Well, once, one session, it sat in a drawer.
Right.
And never came out. So it's the third time we've tried to get it out. And the excuse we hear every time is that there are legislators who are worried about getting reelected. That, I'm sorry, if you're worrying about getting reelected, you're not doing what's right for your constituents. And really, there, we're not going to get the help there because that argument will always be there. So we need to look at other recourses on that property tax. What we, I didn't know till we discuss it this year on the C-tax, on our share of C-tax. I had no idea and maybe I should have known, been, been here so long. I knew what our percentage was, 12.4? 12.4% of a formula that was set way back and never readdressed. And Washoe County and Reno, Reno has more and Washoe County has the most. Um, that's something we need to look at, what our options are to adjust that. So some of these things of the position we're in right now are not necessarily because we've been irresponsibly spending money, but they're outside factors, but they are where we are. I mean, the reality where we are today is, is, is what we have to deal with and make decisions on. On this budget, um, my only, my, my thoughts on the 10% were, the biggest reason I supported it and I, I, today, I'm not, not sure that I, I mean, I think, I'm, I'm rethinking, listening to my colleagues, but the 10%, um, 5% increase in the waste management, and it's, it's a Band-Aid. This is not something we can always continue to do. It's a Band-Aid that will give us a little breathing room for this fiscal year. And the 5% would still start us with a half a million dollar budget deficit. And I just didn't want to start, we've had the last two years with deficits that are increasing, and I didn't want to start with another deficit. So that drove my decision as well as the, uh, public safety positions, the, the, uh, three police and the two fire positions and public safety is our top priority. And to your point, Councilman Anderson, I agree, public safety does cross every department. I mean, it's not just fire and police and not, I, I mean, all of them are important. So that was really my reasoning behind both of the, you know, my decision on why I have supported this. It's just a tough decision today because if we, I mean, I guess our option would depend on what motion someone makes, whether we go with the five or whether we do something in the middle and do a 6% or 7%. I know I hate to do this with us all planning and we've got to get this budget submitted, but, uh, that's really all I have to say. I, explaining why the 10% for me, but understanding, being sensitive to my colleagues and what their reasoning, and I agree with you, Mr. Anderson, it's really hard for me, even after we voted last time, um, on the budget, was looking at departments that took 35%, 36% and looking at others that took nine or 10. Cause I think, and I've said this all the way along, along the way, I think we all have to share the pain as hard as it is. So that's all I have to say.
Anything, Ms. Vanderwill?
I think what's happened, I, I appreciate, first of all, I appreciate all that staff has done and everybody else, um, in finding direction for this. Uh, the unfortunate part is we are sitting here, uh, due to the fact of up until this year during our budget, we never had full picture or were allowed to see and have all of the information that we were this time. Um, what came out of this budget, um, that I learned from just being here the short time I have been here is that we had tools to help sustain us during this time that we wouldn't have had to make this big jump. Um, and now unfortunately, uh, those are the type of decisions that have to be made this time, um, in order to, it's not a, it is a one-time shot. It is not something, I agree with my fellow colleagues, it is not something we cannot fee or tax our ways out of this. We can't. We do have to find other sources of revenue. And we do, I implore with our legislators also to work with all of our local governments because we're all in the same boat, making decisions like this, that we shouldn't have to make these decisions on the back of our residents or our commercial businesses or anything like that. So, um, just pretty much all I have to say. Up until this year, we, I don't, in my opinion, I don't feel that we ever got 100% of the information that we needed. And now we do finally have it and we're stuck here making some tough decisions about it.
Mr. Rodriguez, do you have anything?
No, um, I appreciate where, you know, my, my, you know, the col, my colleagues are coming from. It, it's, there's a lot of unknown, um, you know, from, you know, we're getting from the state, federal level, um, you know, and I, I stand by what I've been saying, the venture, um, learning how this budget works, learning how mechanisms and the roadblocks are in place. We, yeah, I, I'm together as a city, municipality, and not just here, um, but you want to talk about Jeff, um, other cities throughout Nevada, we're all feeling the same thing. And we're limited, you know, that, uh, we have a thick deck against us as a city. And I, I do believe that it's our responsibility to do what we have to do to provide basic little, level services. Um, and hearing from staff over and over again and from some of the colleagues, we're trying to get back to 2009 staffing, um, and it's 2025. And, you know, we, we, you know, we're coming to another probably pretty bad fire system. Um, and as we're growing and growing, you know, we need basic workforce and services. And, you know, she's talked about cutting some of the services that we, as a small, small city, we're able to survive, we're, we're limited on some of these things. And, you know, I stand by these, that a few mechanisms we have in place that don't have to go to state, you know, mother may I have this stuff, uh, we gotta do what we gotta do. So, you know, I, I stand by my decisions, um, uh, from our last meeting and, you know, and I assure the frustration with everyone that, you know, I, I hope legislators are watching and, and I hope they hear us. I, I know I've had numerous conversations, uh, or legislators, you know, we are where we are right now. But, yeah, that's pretty much all I have. Um, I appreciate everyone's insight.
Thank you. All right, someone want to take a stab at a motion then? Mr. Abbott?
I think our clerk's gonna need a second, right? And you probably want me, want to know where I'm gonna go?
We, if you would like to make something different than the recommended motion, Councilman Abbott, then yes, we will need a moment.
Yes. Can we come over?
Can I also make a suggestion?
Sure.
Just for consideration, you could approve the current budget, but give the city manager alternate direction on how to manage that budget. Meaning, like, for example, if, I'm just gonna throw it out there as a for example, um, if you wanted to do something less than the 10%, for example, you can still file the budget with the 10%, but give direction to the city manager not to implement the 10%, but some lower amount or whatever you end up settling on. So what I'm saying is, I guess, at the end of the day, you could approve the budget, and I make that suggestion just because we're kind of on the doorstep and needing to recreate those documents would be very difficult to do, um, in order to make the timely submission by the, by June 1st. But we could file what we have and give alternate direction. Because at the end of the day, a budget is just a plan and you can, you can alternate or give the city manager direction to, um, manage that plan accordingly. So just something to think about.
What would you guys like me to do?
I think we're comfortable either way from our end. You know, if you want to prescribe a specific one with 6%, we can certainly do that if that's your pleasure. If you want to do, uh, what Jeff said, that is fine as well, where you give me direction to, uh, you know, approve the budget at the 10%, but, you know, only leverage 6% of the dollars that would come from the franchise fee, uh, if we were to do that. So whichever you prefer, we can make work.
Uh, this is a quick question for Jeff then. How hard is it, is it, if it went from 10 to 6, how, what's, how many hours of work is that?
To actual change the budget?
Yeah.
It's not so much the hours, it's not so much the hours, we would have to bring it back to you for signature. So we'd probably have to hold a separate meeting.
Right.
We'd have to, we would have, I don't know, I would actually defer to the clerk's office as far as that goes.
Yeah, we would have to have another meeting, we need three business days to notice that. But if you prefer that route, we can certainly do that.
What's the date today? Today's 27?
So Jeff, in what, in what you're saying, if we, and, and, and a lot of it to the budget itself, on every other scope of what you've, of what every department has cut, about what are, um, the rest of the budget that all the hard work, difficult for every department and for you, that we've come to, we can approve the budget itself, the actual mechanism on the, um, on the treatment, on the waste management fee, is something that depending on the motion here, could be, what was the word you used?
Just manage to it.
Refer it to the city manager, who would he have to come back to council to decide if that would be different? Or it was an adjustment, it'd be an adjustment that he makes by himself or that we have to make here on the dais?
On specific to that, uh, to that particular fee, your direction today could be implemented. Um, and, and, and the budget itself wouldn't have to change. And the reason I say that is, the mechanism of what the, the budget is, is you as a council are setting the, um, really you're setting the expenditure authority. Whether we come in under or over a revenue budget is really irrelevant. Um, it's really, there is no state law that says you must come in under or above your, your revenue budget. Uh, the revenue budget really is an estimate. So, you know, from that perspective, um, um, state law really dictates that we cannot spend over the established budget on the expenditure side.
Okay.
So the, so the revenue side is something that can be, you know, come in, it's gonna do what it's going to do, you know?
Well, and the revenue side has.
You can just give direction today to, to the city manager's office and we'll implement it, uh, that the, that the fee would go up X percent, you know, whatever, whatever you end up settling on, whether it's six or five or 10 or, you know, whatever you end up settling on, we would implement that. We can leave the budget as is.
Okay, because the, but, yeah, the, obviously the revenue side, which is the problem we've had in the last two years because of inflation, the revenue side has not come in at all what we expected. But the budget that, that needs to be approved is what expenditures and that's what we would be approving and what we're tied into for the year.
There is, just to state it another way, there are, there are no violations, there's not a violation of state law if we don't hit our revenues exactly or come under it or, or over it or anything like that. It's really on the expense side. So that's why, you know, put, put that option out there saying that we could still file a budget. a budget as is with the revenue as it states in the current budget document that we have in front of you, with direction to the city manager to implement a different percentage. And, and that would be fine, that's not in violation of state law at all.
Mayor, if I may too, the easier solution is probably what Jeff just said. Because if we were going to notice this, we'd have to notice it, we're, we're gonna meet Saturday then, it would be a Saturday meeting to be able to pull that off. So it's probably easier transactionally to do it how Jeff just explained, and then we can adjust to whatever the leisure of the council is on that front.
Ms. Vanderwell?
Okay, so I want to get clarification. So out of what Councilman Abbott has proposed, okay, we will then lose those five positions that we were trying to prevent losing with the 10%?
If that's your direction to the city manager.
Okay, all right. My concern is-
The budget would still reflect the, the, the plan, again, would still, would still, and that's what a budget is, it's just a plan. So the plan would be as we stated and as we presented last May 12th, the last time we met. But then you would give alternate direction to the city manager saying, don't fill those three positions or proceed with the layoffs, you know, with the two firefighter, however you wanted to couch that, that could still fall within that same budget and leave the budget as is, but give direction to the city manager on how to implement that budget.
All right, it's just-
Because again, remember, you're not, if you're, if you're removing those positions, you're not, the budget is there. So you could be, you would be under it or at least at that budget.
At the budget, okay.
Does that make sense?
With dropping it, with directing the city manager to go to the 6% on the franchise fee, it does not fund those five positions that, that we voted on on May 12th, correct?
Well, it just removes that fund-
Or removes the funding from those positions.
Yes.
Correct. So we're not able to fill them.
Correct.
And that's exactly right. From our position, if you did 6%, using that as an example, it would not include, our recommendation would not include those five positions.
Okay, all right. And my concern, I, I'll voice my concern over that. I read what Chief Crawford sends us and everything else. Our police calls are increasing because our population is increasing. I'm concerned that we do not have sometimes enough patrol. I realize we have the coverage, but, but it's getting warmer and kids are out of school and we're gonna have a lot more happening. And we've had two or three fires this weekend. So those are just my concerns there. Yes, I agree with Councilman Anderson that every single department is public safety, but it's, it's also that one-on-one. So, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Abbott?
Yeah, just, just add on to that end. I definitely, you know, I think both of us probably have some of the higher call volumes between the whole part of the city. I do worry about bringing people on and then they have a dark cloud over them, wondering if the budget takes a dump, if sales tax drops, if business licenses drop. They are the lowest on that seniority list. They are the first to go. And they worry every day, they show up to work to make sure they do not mess up. They make sure that they're, they worry. They just always are worrying. That doesn't just go for PD, that can go for anybody. And like I said, I support PD, I support fire. I support, I think you said it best, Councilman Anderson, about everyone is part of the first responders. Everyone wants a paycheck. Everyone wants HR to be there. Everyone wants, even us, they want us here. Even if, you know, at times we, we, we all have a role in the city. Definitely not comparing any of us to some of the things they deal with at all, but we all have a role. And so that's, I think, my 6% idea is to give us some runway, I think that's a word I steal from City Manager Louthen, just so we have a little, like I said, a little runway, like, excuse me, looking at FY '26, Councilwoman Vanderwell, you know, that was one of your concerns or reasonings of eliminating that. You know, right now, let's just say we, let's do our math of our 5% franchise fee, we're looking at 500K in FY '26, a deficit, with our two union contracts or labor contracts that we voted on last council meeting, that's another 200K for FY '26. And then obviously FY '27 is another ballgame. So we're, we're gonna be chasing dollars. We're gonna be, you know, we're, I'm really hoping, you know, being in Nevada that I am, that some of the, you know, the sponsorship stuff wants to get that back. I hope that, I hope that's our magic pill. I hope we raise a million dollars, you know, I, I hope. But I think having some balance for the residents that myself and obviously all y'all represent too, and also giving us some runway so we can get through this. And I hope we don't have to make another hard decision like today in the future, I truly do. And if we do, that's what we, that's what we're here for. But that, that's one of my thoughts behind it, is just that 1%, you know, it's, it's $300,000. It's a small runway, it ain't, it ain't fixing the budget deficit, I get that, but it does help a little bit, so. And if there's nothing else, I can take a stab at a motion if nobody else has anything.
Do you have any more comments?
I've got one more question, sorry. So Jeff, if we did the 6%, what kind of budget deficit would we start at? Because a budget deficit for me is really, is, is hard, is one of the hardest pills for me to swallow right now. And, you know, the public safety positions. But if we did 6% instead of the 10, we're still gonna have a deficit to start. We're not even looking at the next year, but just for this upcoming year.
Correct. So quick, quick math?
400.
So, yeah, quick math, it's gonna be in that 350, 400 range. And think about it, would be, now that's not gonna be reflected in the budget if you, if you take my suggestion, we'll just file the budget as is if you want to go that route. So you'd have to look at it, if you recall, I presented that we're gonna go into fiscal '27 with about a $2.4 million budget deficit. So that would push it back up to about 2.8, 2.9 million.
Okay, thank you.
Ready? Let's take a stab at a motion and we'll go from there.
Roger that. I move to adopt the final budget for the city of Sparks for fiscal year 2025 to 2026 with direction to the city manager for the waste management fee to be 6%. Is that good? Cool.
Works for me.
Give us just one moment.
Roger that.
Need one more.
See, sticking off.
This is deja vu all over again. That got on. Yep. No, she was in Ward 1. But he was on then too. Yes, that's what I understood. Thank you.
Councilman Abbott, once they finish the motion, we'll, Julie will put it back up on the board and have you read it into the record.
Yes, ma'am.
He's gonna, he's gonna read this motion in, Mr. Rodriguez. Go ahead, Mr. Abbott. It says 8%.
The current fee right now is 8%. So it would take it from 8 to 14. So we're trying to be very clear with what the gross receipt piece of that was.
I move to, I move to adopt the final budget for the city of Sparks for fiscal year 2025 to 2026 as presented with the direction to the city manager to increase the waste management franchise fee from 8% of gross receipts to 14% of gross receipts.
Mr. Anderson?
I'll second the motion.
I've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Got a clarification question.
Go ahead.
So the way this is written, it's with the direction to increase waste management fee, if we are adopting the budget, in the budget it says 10. Should the wording be different? Because if we're adopting the budget, what's baked in the budget right now is 10%. So do we need to clean, am I being, am I being too legal on this? I mean, tell me if we need that clarification.
You can never be too legal, Councilman Abbott.
Says the lawyer.
No, I, I, in terms of why, and City Manager Louthen, correct me if I'm wrong, but the, the budget, the prior direction was to move it to 18%. Now, this new motion proposal is saying it's only moving to 14, which gets you to 6 instead of 10%. So that, that's pretty clear from a, from a motion perspective, that the direction is, you're not funding the budget with 10%, a 10% increase, you're funding it with a 6% increase. Because as a reminder, you all were at 8% of gross receipts to start. And the budget that was approved two weeks ago moved it from 8% to 18. This now is proposing you go from 8 to 14. And that, so that funding, it's not a full funding mechanism of 10%, it's 6%. And that's, that's what that motion reflects.
Okay. I guess I was looking at whether we said the city manager to change the waste management franchise fee from 8% to 14%. I was just worried about, it's baked in at 10 on the budget we've, we're approving. Or does that, is this clear enough to indicate within approving the rest of the budget that this piece of it is going from 8 to 14?
Yeah, if, if I may.
Yeah.
The way, the way this reads and the way we'll, we would implement it based on this motion, is that the, the budget would be filed as it's presented to you today, so you would sign that, which includes the 10%.
That we're managing.
But we will manage and, and reduce that down to 14, yes.
Okay. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Well, then let's please vote. Mr. Rodriguez?
I just want to confirm, this is the way that this is being presented, I'm trying to follow this with the, I thought it was 6%, and I'm reading on there now it's 8. But this will not fund those positions. I'm sure I understand that as it's presented right now.
So let me try and run it backwards. 8% is currently what we have?
That's correct.
By adding 6%, that brings us to 14%.
That's correct.
And that's not gonna be able to save those positions that we talked about, 8%.
Refer to the manager.
That, that is correct. That would eliminate three of the police officer positions that we were quote-unquote unfreezing and two of the firefighters that would then be laid off. So bringing a total of five firefighters that would be laid off.
Okay, understood with that, my vote would be 9.
Okay. Okay. The motion carries three to two with Vanderwell and Rodriguez in opposition.
Okay.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you.
Painful, painful stuff. Okay. Let's move on. First reading, Madam Clerk, 9.8.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is first reading of Bill 2832 to amend Sparks Municipal Code, Section 20.02.013 to require approval of a conditional use permit for new construction of drive-through facilities and intensification of existing drive-through facilities, and Section 20.03.16 to modify use standards for drive-through facilities. A public hearing will be held and Bill 2832 will be acted upon at the regular meeting of the Sparks City Council on Monday, June 9, 2025 at 2:00 PM in the Sparks City Council Legislative Building. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. We don't have any planning and zoning public hearings, comments from the public and in the public wishing to speak?
We do have one, Mr. Mayor.
Hunter, you're up again.
Hello, Hunter Rand, Ward 2 resident. A little bit different than I think that card says. I'm very concerned about cutting fire positions and police positions. I'm a certified Nevada Safety and Health practitioner by the state of Nevada, so occupational health and safety. And something that I've seen nationwide, especially with mandatory overtime with police and fire, is motor vehicle collisions because they fall asleep behind the wheel. And it's very concerning. It's something that you don't think about until you need them, right? Or until something bad happens. Gonna be vague on details because it's still being adjudicated, but I'm very thankful to Sparks Fire and Sparks Police. Last July, I was dragged on Pyramid by a driver who was allegedly under the influence. And I want to say that the firefighters that stabilized my leg prevented permanent damage. Good enough that they took my handicap placards, unfortunately. But, you know, if we want nice things, we have to pay for them. And it's hard for me because this hits my pocketbook too. I'm a consulting engineer in charge on a satellite truck that many of you may have enjoyed if you watch NBC Sports or other channels that I've been told not to say out of public comment. And we're replacing our instant replay machine. And I, we budgeted $4,500 and we saw what was happening with the economy tariffs and other things. And we spent $5,500. I believe it was finance because it was a urgent purchase. Right now, we're looking at $17,500 for the same equipment. So it's hitting every industry and everyone. You know, I could tell you my medications are up in costs, car maintenance is up. So it's hard, but at the same time, I, and I understand that there's people that are not able to pay, but I'm willing to, and this is gonna sound crazy, pay more in taxes to pay for these things because, you know, I think the hope is no one ever needs, no offense, no one ever needs Sparks Fire or Sparks Police, but when you do, they're there. And I think we're getting to the point, and I read something about brownouts to fire stations, you know? We're getting to the point where it's like you might call them and they're not going to come. And I've experienced that in Reno already, unfortunately, with a business that I helped with in Reno. And I hope that doesn't happen in Sparks, especially in Ward 2. Ward 2, a lot of the houses are cloth Romex wiring. And, you know, I could tell you it's $30,000 to rewire my house. And I'm not gonna do that. So I just, I hate to say it, I'm gonna maintain it. And then if it goes up, I hope that Sparks Fire is there and they've been there for everyone else in my neighborhood. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public wishing to speak at this time? Okay. We'll close public comment and announcements from Mayor, City Council, City Manager. Mr. Manager, you have anything?
No, I appreciate all council comments and the conversation around the budget. I know it was very, very difficult and not something that, you know, you didn't dig, dig deeply to, to look through all the different options that we had. So I thank you for that. We had good conversations and appreciate all the staff. And I know it was a lot of work for each of you up there, but we appreciate that. And, and as we move forward, we'll continue to try to bring you good information so you can make informed decisions. And while hopefully we'll have some good news in the future, right now financially, we're just in a tough spot.
Anything from the council? Mr. Anderson?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. We heard at the beginning of the meeting about mental health and, and how important it is. Just want to let everyone know that this Saturday at the Sparks Marina at 9 o'clock, they're gonna have the Out of the Darkness Walk put on by the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention. And we would love to see y'all out there. They'll have all kinds of folks out there that will be able to assist and direct those that are struggling through the mental health difficulty time. So, hope you can join us. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Abbott?
I'll just throw out, I think, a week and a half ago, 60 volunteers went on the side of the hill and we repainted the S. Because look up there, it's glowing. It's, like I said, 100-year anniversary, so hopefully it keeps glowing, hopefully no one messes with it. But it's kind of a cool thing that Sparks has been a part of, and there's a lot of community volunteers that came out and supported. And just take a look at the S if you haven't seen it yet.
They didn't even spell it correctly. I'm sorry. I shouldn't have said that. True, but I shouldn't have said it. All right, anyone else have anything? Okay. Well, then we're adjourned. Can you turn that off, Jeff?
Is that me?
Yeah.
That's true.
You lay 38% off.
Oh, when you do.
That was like over 600 people back then, now we're at 400.
So it's more? I was thinking 30.
Almost 40%. This is when you hold your nose and vote.
Uh, we'll call it to order today's Sparks Development Agency meeting with a call to order, or a roll call, sorry.
Thank you. Chairperson Abbott.
Here.
Agency members Lawson.
Here.
Bybee.
Here.
Vanderwell.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Rodriguez is absent. Chief Legal Officer Duncan. Chief Administrative Officer Lawson.
Here.
We have a quorum, thank you.
Awesome, thank you. Do we have any public comment?
We do not.
Awesome, we'll go to 4.1, looking for approval of the agenda. Agency member Vanderwell?
I move to approve the agenda, submit it.
Thank you. Agency member Anderson?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, please vote. Passes unanimously for all people present. Item 5.1, consideration, discussion, possible approval for other minutes of the Sparks Development Agency meeting for April 28th, 2025. Looking for a motion. Agency member Lawson?
I move to approve those minutes.
Thank you, sir. Agency member Vanderwell?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, please vote. Passing unanimously for all agency members present. We are off to 6.1, consideration and possible acceptance of the report of the claims and bills approved for the payment appropriation transfers for the period of April 16th, 2025 through May 12th, 2025. Looking for a motion. Agency member Vanderwell?
I move to accept the report of claims and bills and the appropriation transfers for the period of April 16th, 2025 through May 12th, 2025.
Thank you. Agency member Anderson?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, please vote. Passing unanimously for all agency members present. 7.1, public hearing on the tentative budget for redevelopment agency for the City of Sparks Area 2 for fiscal year 2025 to 2026 as required by NRS 254, period 596. Mr. Cronk?
Good afternoon, agency chair and agency members. I am Jeff Cronk, the Chief Financial Officer for the record. Same process as with the city. This is required by Nevada law that we hold a, a public hearing and, and get public comment on the tentative budget, and that's what's before you on this item. No action required.
And we will, with my gavel, open it up. Is there any public comment? We'll close that, and there's, perfect, thank you, thank you for the assist. No action, we'll go on to item 7.2, consideration, discussion, and possible adoption for the final budget for the redevelopment agency of the City of Sparks, Area 2 for fiscal year 2025 to 2026. Mr. Cronk, again.
Yep, again, good afternoon. Jeff Cronk, your Chief Financial Officer for the record. Again, same procedure as it was for the city. This is the final budget that's being presented in front of you today for your approval and signature. Very little change dip between the tentative budget and the final budget for the redevelopment agency. So it's very, very similar that we actually filed back in April. So very little change. I'm open to answer any questions you have.
Any questions or comments? I don't see any. Looking for a motion, then. Agency member Anderson?
Move to approve the final budget for redevelopment agency of City of Sparks Area 2 for the fiscal year 2025, 2026.
Thank you, sir. Agency member Vanderwell?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, please vote. Passing unanimously for all agency members present. 8.1, comments from the public? Any?
We have none.
Perfect. 8.2, announcements from the agency and Chief Administrative Officer? Anybody have anything? Perfect. We'll adjourn. 414.